Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 9th, 2018 Salisbury City Council Legislative Session. I would ask that you all please silence any electronic devices that will make noise. If you need to make a phone call, we ask that you please do it outside the chambers. During the meeting, should an emergency arise, please exit in an orderly manner. Exit the chamber, make a right-hand turn, and go down the stairs. If for some reason that exit is blocked, please make a left and a right and go down those stairs. If you're unable to use... Please do not use these stairs. Please do not use the elevator, only the stairs. Should you need special assistance, please let us know, and we'll be happy to provide it to you. At this time, I call Reverend David McLendon Sr. from St. James AME Zion Church to the podium for the invocation.
Let us bow our heads. Our wise and everlasting God, our Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all of us who have gathered here this evening. Thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health, that we need to fulfill our callings for nourishment and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us where we are. In Scripture, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various level of city officials, and for this assembled council. I ask that you would grant them wisdom to govern according to the conflicting interests and issues of our time, a sense of welfare, and the true need for our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in the lives and joy of their task. I pray for the agenda that is set forth before us this evening. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Salisbury, Maryland. These in thy blessings we humbly and properly ask, in Jesus' name and in His name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend McLendon. We appreciate it. Please rise now and join me in this pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation this evening from the Green Initiatives. The presentation was given by Ron Airi and Alyssa Massey. Good evening.
So, the Green Team has been working with Salisbury University students and wonderful community members to rebrand our recycling program. So, we wanted to officially come together and unveil what we've been working on as our recycling rebranding. So, this is our Recycle Right logo, and it will now be as on all of the new recycle bins that we put out into the city. And Casey Martin has generously donated her time to donate... donated her time to design for us a Recycle Right SBY magnet. What you see here will be able to be on refrigerators, and it'll be a very easy way for people to know exactly what they can or cannot put into their blue bins. This is just a larger version of the Recycle Right magnet with the full list. And this is our updated recycling brochure that was also designed by Casey.
Just about the brochure. I'd like to thank Casey for an excellent job that she did on this new brochure. The previous one was dated 2008, and everybody knows a lot of things have changed in the last 10 years regarding recycling, so it's kind of clarifies a lot of things that we're interested in. Most notably, it talks about cardboard, what's considered cardboard, what's not considered cardboard, because we're about to kick off a new initiative where we'll be collecting cardboard on the same day that your trash is picked up. So, instead of residents calling in and making an appointment for us to come by on Mondays, all they're going to need to do is set it out with the trash, and we'll pick it up that same day. Big announcement should go out shortly, but we plan to kick it off full-blown May 1st, so that's coming. But this brochure will go out to residents that are new to the city, that have just moved in, that are automatically mailed one of these, and any resident that receives a recycle bin, this brochure goes in the recycle bin and is handed to them. So, we're trying to educate and get as many people on board with our recycling program as possible, so... But thanks again for your great work.
Thank you so much to everyone who is involved with this. Okay. And here's the... This is the other side of the brochure. As you can see, we picture... On the brochure, you can see the four quadrants of the city, and it tells you exactly when your pickup is, which is very... A lot more clear than the old recycling brochure used to be, and we've included a lot of graphics to make it as easy and simple as possible.
Great.
Our new Recycle Right branding is also leading into something we're going to do at the National Folk Festival next September. We're using our new recycle initiatives to make it a zero-waste event. So, we're striving towards zero waste, and we'll be using volunteers to man the stations to divert as much waste as possible from the landfill. And... One more thing. To prepare for the Folk Festival and to prepare for this task, we are doing a soft run on Third Friday on April 20th, where we will have zero-waste stations set up downtown. And if anyone is interested in volunteering and being a zero-waste volunteer, we'd love to have you. It should be a really fun event. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. We have a proclamation.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. President, council members. This is critically important to our city. This is... Our sanitation, our waste disposal and collection regime is critical to the environment, to the recognition of service provision from local government, and is critical to what our city looks like. We've had a series of conversations. Councilman Rudisil has brought up a series of issues that he's identified and that we've all talked about as a council and myself, and I think this is a topic that we all care very much about. It is something that certainly can seem sort of as a background utility function of government, but it can also be critical to whether your city is looking the way it should or not. Let's also bear in mind that we want to, as a city, treat our environment with respect. And I want to say thank you to a number of people. I want to say thank you, first of all, to the Green Committee for the National Folk Festival. I want to say thank you to Councilman Irtin, to everybody else who has served on that group. I want to say thank you to the... Our Green Team, our Sustainability Advisory Committee, many of whom are here tonight. Every single one of you has given so much. Thank you to Tony Facelli for the staff support, for the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Tony, appreciate it. And since the moment you've arrived here, Ron, I just want to say thank you for your hard work in ensuring that our recycling and sanitation efforts in the city are constantly improving, and we're seeing it, and we're benefiting from it. So, a big part of this, and I just want to make sure it doesn't go unrecognized, a big part of those improvements are the collection of and the very, hopefully, well-advertised collection of cardboard. In our city, we have at times not collected cardboard; at other times, we have. There's been confusion. Not everybody's understood what they can and cannot do with it. There is clarity, I think, now that as long as it's not a pizza box, you can put it in the recycling. So, I want to say thank you for that, and thank you for, as we saw in our metrics earlier today, the rising rate of recycling that's occurring in our city and the fact that we are actually in the one area or one of the areas you want to underperform. We are underperforming in terms of the amount of trash we are taking to the landfill, and that's a good thing. So, that being said, there's a couple other people that I want to call attention to specifically. So, first, Casey, would you come up here? So, Casey, I have a... If you don't know Casey Martin, Casey has been a dedicated volunteer for the city in so many ways, from our TEDx event to the Sustainability Advisory Committee, lending your design services to the city on multiple occasions for so many great products. So, you are also... Casey is also a member of our Sustainability Advisory Committee. So, Casey Martin, a dedicated member of the Green Team, has served on the team since January 2016 and helped lead the charge for Salisbury to achieve and maintain sustainable Maryland certification. Casey, over the past several months, has graciously donated her time and talents as a graphic designer to rebrand the City of Salisbury's recycling program. Casey worked with Dr. Sarah Surak's Political Science 440 Public Administration class in the fall of 2017 to design our Recycle Right logo for the city and designed the recycling brochure and magnet to clarify and help City of Salisbury residents to, quote, "Recycle Right." So, now I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby recognize Casey for her exemplary service to the Sustainability Advisory Committee and dedication to our community. So, next, can I get Dr. Surak to come up? So, we would also like to recognize Dr. Sarah Surak for her exemplary commitment to civic engagement. Dr. Surak has worked to engage students in civic engagement projects, strengthening student community partnerships in both her role as environmental studies and political science professor and as co-director of PACE, the Institute for Public Affairs and Civic Engagement at Salisbury University. Last fall, Dr. Surak and her class... Dr. Surak encouraged her students to work with the city's Sustainability Advisory Committee to strengthen sustainability in Salisbury. And under her direction and guidance, her students presented policy proposals to the city council on December 4th, 2017, and many of those ideas are now being implemented. Dr. Surak's credentials made her an excellent choice to chair the Folk Festival Green Committee, thereby contributing to the city's continuing efforts in striving towards zero waste. She serves as a source of support and information for our local recycling and waste management efforts, and so now, therefore, I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby recognize Dr. Sarah Surak for her exemplary service and dedication to our sustainability efforts and to the City of Salisbury. So, I would now like to invite up some of your students that I think are here. I'm going to start first by asking Terry Gladys to come forward. So, Terry has interned for the City of Salisbury in the mayor's office, and where's Alyssa? And Alyssa Massey, come on up. And Alyssa, too, who now works for the City of Salisbury. I'd also like to invite forward Eleanor Brown, William Darden, Jacob Fisher. It's going to get crowded up there. Not here? Graduated? Okay. Congratulations to Jacob. Gabrielle Miles, Abigail Mulhern, Nicole Stafford? Yeah, if you guys want to. Evan? I'm not going to get it right, Evan. So, Evan T.? And Lilian Walters?
Also graduated.
Also graduated. Okay. All right. So, let's see here. Eleanor? Eleanor's behind me. All right. And William? There you go. And Jacob? Oh, Jacob, graduate. Yeah. And... Okay. And Gabrielle? Yes. And Abigail?
She's studying abroad.
Studying abroad?
No.
She's in London? Very nice. Nicole? And Evan T.? Yeah. And Lilian, graduated. So, these students showed incredible dedication to our city, to our zero-waste efforts, and to improving sustainability in Salisbury through their community engagement work, helping to improve sustainability in our city. And they spent the fall semester of 2017 dedicated to civic engagement through Dr. Surak's PoliSci 440 class, the public administration course. And their groups focused on three main topics: zero waste at the National Folk Festival, rebranding our recycling information, and helping businesses become more sustainable in our community. Through their projects, they enhanced their learning by meeting with city staff, business owners, and community members to gather feedback, and presented their policy proposals to the city council. Many of the student projects are currently being implemented, and we are incredibly grateful and want to recognize them for their exemplary service to our city. Let's hear it for them. Should we get a picture with all of you and with the Green Team and Sarah? Yeah, everybody? Back with the council.
Keep going, man. Squish.
Jim, put that down so you can... They can see you.
Story of my life.
We got that. All right. The council wants to thank all of you for your hard work. Thank you. You're all rushing back to study. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda as presented. Mr. Rudisil, Mr. Irtin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Rudisil, Mr. Boda. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the March 19th, 2018 work session minutes, the March 26th, 2018 regular meeting minutes, and Resolution Number 2830, accepting funds in cooperation with the Waukesha County Emergency Services through the Department of Homeland Security to purchase equipment to be utilized by first responders to meet the challenges posed by potential acts of terrorism. And that's it for the consent agenda.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Irtin, Mr. Boda.
Good evening. How are you, Mrs. Miller?
Great. Thank you. Just one item this evening. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to process change order number five in the amount of $211,560 for RFP 10-15. That's the wastewater treatment plant, construction, management, and inspection. This change will provide for construction and inspection services to continue through August 31st, 2018, if needed, to coincide with the additional time requested by Oleman Shutey, the vendor performing the work for contract 107-15, the wastewater treatment plant BNR slash ENR upgrades. Funds are available in the wastewater treatment plant project account, which is noted in your packet, and additional details are noted in the departmental memo, which I have attached. The Department of Procurement hereby requests council's approval for change order number five, as noted above, to GHD Incorporated in the amount of $211,560.
Any questions or comments?
Just if not needed...
Yes.
Do you want us to put the money back or leave it there in that particular?
We will only expend it if that is needed. So, we will do a change order to the PO, put that amount on the PO, and then, should it not be needed, it will just go back to the project account.
Okay.
And this is probably dangerous to say.
Yeah, I was going to...
But I finally said if needed. I didn't want to go there. But the project is coming to a close this, you know, late spring, early summer, so there, you know, if there's anything left, there will probably need to be a conversation about what happens to the project.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. At this time, we're going to have a public hearing on the RISE Zone. Anyone who wishes to speak, please stand and be sworn in by the clerk. Then I will open the public hearing, and I will close the public hearing, since there is no comment. I'll call for a motion now on Resolution Number 2831.
So moved. I have a second.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Irtin. Good evening.
Good evening, council. It's been a while since I've been up here.
Yes.
Before you is a Resolution Number 2831, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, authorizing an application to the Maryland Department of Commerce for the designation of a regional institution... an institutional strategic enterprise zone, whereas the city council is interested in promoting the redevelopment and economic growth of the Route 13 corridor from Salisbury University to downtown Salisbury. And whereas the Maryland Department of Commerce can assist the city in this endeavor by allowing Salisbury to designate a regional institution... institutional strategic enterprise zone, thereby providing a real property tax credit for qualified property located within the boundaries of the zone, as shown on the attached map. And whereas the Maryland General Assembly has established a regional institution strategic enterprise zone, RISE Zone, program to assess institutional assets and have a strong and demonstrated history of commitment to economic development and revitalization in the communities in which they are located and provide certain benefits to eligible projects developed in those areas. And whereas Tax Property Article 9-103.1 of the Annotated Code of Maryland mandates that local governments grant a real property tax credit to qualified properties within a RISE Zone, and that if qualified property is also within a focus area designated under Economic Development Article 5-706 of the Annotated Code of Maryland, the tax credit must be equal to 80% of the amount of the property tax imposed on the eligible assessment of the qualified property for each of the five taxable years following the calendar year in which property initially qualifies. And whereas applications for the designation of RISE Zone must be submitted jointly by a qualified institution and a county or municipal corporation, and whereas Salisbury University submitted and received its qualified institution designation in April 2017. And whereas the City of Salisbury desires to join Salisbury University to execute and submit an application to the State of Maryland Department of Commerce for the area specified on the map attached Exhibit A to be designated as a RISE Zone. Just caught institution. It's either institution or institutional. There's a couple of different versions in here. I don't know what it's supposed to be. Is it institutional or institution?
She's just talking in the...
Laura.
Yes. Institutional.
Line 13. I think just line 13 needs to be changed.
Actually, I meant that, sorry. It is institution.
Okay. All right. Line six.
It's correct.
Line six needs to be edited. Then, all right.
Do we need a motion?
We'll need a motion to amend it now.
I think it's just a typo.
Typo?
Okay.
Typo. Okay.
I'll have to fix it.
So, is... Okay. Everybody got it?
Just on the six.
Just in the title.
Any questions or concerns? No? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 2831, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2478 for the second reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Irtin, Mr. Boda. Good evening, Mr. Tillman.
Good evening. It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of capital project fund to appropriate funds to the radio communication project using funds donated to the city, whereas the City of Salisbury Fire Department was notified by the Clawdell Bodle Jr. Revocable Trust that it was named as a beneficiary of the trust, and whereas the trust was executed in distribution of funds in the amount of $120,958.47 pursuant to Article 4B to B of the trust, and whereas the City of Salisbury Fire Department is in receipt of monies equal to its share as outlined in the trust, and whereas funds appropriated are to be used to enhance its capabilities in providing the effective and efficient delivery of fire, rescue, and emergency medical services, and whereas the City of Salisbury Fire Department desires to allocate the funds to the radio communication project. Whereas both the fire chief and the mayor have recommended that the city accept the monetary donation and allocate the funds to the radio communication project, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the general capital project fund budget be amended as follows: increase the donation revenue 9801845641548033 by $120,958.47, and increase the equipment account 98118-577030-48033 by $120,958.47.
Any questions?
Just is there any way in particular we're going to honor the Clawdell Bodle family for their donation?
Chief's not...
Find out next time.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I don't think that's been discussed yet, so we'll work on it.
It's not $120.
No.
You're right.
Comma. All right. Hearing none, I'll call the... I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2478 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2479 for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Irtin, Mr. Boda. Mr. Tillman?
Okay, this is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2018 general fund budget to appropriate funding to the Business Development Marketing Fund, whereas the city has sold $1,883.34 worth of merchandise at newly created downtown Salisbury Visitor Center as of March 5th, 2018, and whereas an initial budget transfer was completed on October 2017 in the amount of $925.48, and whereas the city would like to return those funds to downtown Visitor Center marketing account on a regular basis to make sure the visitor center has a healthy stock of merchandise, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the city's fiscal year 2018 general fund budget be amended as follows: increase account 11600-555512 marketing by $957.86.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2479 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll detain a motion to approve ordinance number 2480 for the first reading.
So moved, second.
Mr. Rudisil, Mr. Ierton. Mr. Tillman?
This is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to amend the Salisbury Municipal Code, Chapter 15.24, Article 26, accumulation of rubbish prohibited to enable the City of Salisbury to perform abatement after three rubbish violations. Whereas the mayor and city council requested that Housing and Community Development Department periodically review Chapter 15.24. And whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of 15.24 demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation, and amendment to keep the chapter current, whereas the rubbish violations are one of the most common code violations, and creating stricter enforcement measures will assist in reducing these violations overall. And whereas this amendment will allow the rubbish violations to mirror other code violations in Chapter 15.24, now therefore be ordained and enacted by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that Chapter 15.24 of the Salisbury Municipal Code be amended as follows. Under the heading 15.24.1320 general, no person shall allow rubbish to remain, to be deposited, or to accumulate, either temporarily or permanently on his property. This section shall not apply to those persons who store such rubbish in a lawfully permitted manner for the purpose of collection pursuant to Chapter 8.16 of this code. Under 15.24.1330, notice to remove rubbish, the first paragraph, the City of Salisbury housing officials hereby authorized, has been removed, and in its place, the following has been added. When a violation of Section 15.24.1320 of this chapter occurs, a warning letter of violation shall be sent to the owner of the property. This warning letter of violation shall, paragraph A, be in writing, paragraph B, state the nature of the violation and describe the conditions that constitute a violation. Paragraph C, describe the property where the violation is alleged to exist. Paragraph D, for a first violation in any calendar year, paragraph I, state that the condition must be removed from the property within 10 days after the date of the notice. And paragraph II, state that the Housing and Community Development Department shall conduct a reinspection of the property after 10 days have passed since the date of the notice. Paragraph E, for a second violation in a calendar year, paragraph I, state the condition must be removed from the property within seven days after the date of the notice. Paragraph II, state that the Housing and Community Development Department shall conduct a reinspection of the property after seven days have passed since the date of the notice. Paragraph F, state that if during the inspection of the property, the violation complained of in the warning letter is found, it shall be abated by the city as soon as practicable, and the cost of such abatement shall be specifically assessed, shall be deemed a personal debt of the owner and constitute a lien against the property. Subparagraph D, state that upon violation of Section 15.24.1320 of this chapter, the owner shall be guilty of immunicipal infraction, and upon conviction shall be fined $100 for the initial offense, and $100 for each day the condition remains unabated up to a maximum of $500. Subparagraph H, be served by one of the following methods: by depositing the notice or order in the United States Post Office, first class postage prepaid, addressed to the owner at his last known address, is recorded in the real estate assessment records of the City of Salisbury, and by posting a copy of the notice or order in a conspicuous place on the property subject to the order. Or, subparagraph II, by hand delivering the notice to the person to be notified, or subparagraph III, by leaving the notice at the usual residence or place of business to the person to be notified with a person of suitable age and discretion, then a resident of the property or employed therein. Subparagraph I, state that only two warning letters will be issued to the same property owner in any calendar year, and that if further rubbish violations occur, the condition causing a violation may be abated without further notice. Section 15.24.1340, removal of rubbish by the city. It reads, upon failure, neglect, or refusal of any order so notified to remove or properly dispose of rubbish within the time specified in the notice provided for in Section 15.24.1330 of this chapter. And then there's some three or four lines that are then struck, and then following the colon, subparagraph A, the owner shall be in violation of this chapter and shall be guilty of immunicipal infraction, and upon conviction in any court of competent jurisdiction shall be fined $100 for the initial offense, and $100 for each day that the offense remains unabated up to a maximum of $500. Every such person may be guilty of a separate offense, for each day such violation shall continue. And then subparagraph B reads, the housing official may cause the condition to be abated by appropriate means. The Housing and Community Development Department shall send only two warning letters to the property owner in any calendar year for a rubbish violation. If further violations of this chapter occur, the condition causing the violation may be abated without notice. And then 15.24.1350, charges for removal and collection will remain the same, and 15.24.1360 is struck, that subsection is struck in its entirety. And this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon adoption.
Any questions?
I was just gonna ask, does anybody remember where Susan came up with the 10 days and the 7 days? Is that uniform?
Yeah, that matches the...
Does that match?
If you look at the brush of Statchi, basically, this mirrors that.
Yeah.
That's where this came from.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2480 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you. We now have time for public comments. There are two requests. First up is Lynn Bratton.
It's good to see you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Lynn Bratton. I am a homeowner and resident of the City of Salisbury. I live at 303 South Boulevard in Salisbury, Maryland. I'm also a property owner of a number of other properties that are inhabited by some of our wonderful clients in our city, and I rent to them, and they deserve good, safe housing. Thank you to the green team for doing the cardboard. Yay! I've been a fan of recycling since I student taught in 1973, and went to one of the first days in DC celebrating the planet, so that's awesome. One of our first Earth days. Thought I might be able to comment before you voted, but I know there's still another vote coming, and I'm sorry I was not here at the work session. I was doing costumes for community players. Calendar girls, even though I thought they didn't need any costumes, they really do need costumes for that show. I just thought a few bodysuits would work, and I had to do costumes for them. So please come and support community players. My question is, and again, it may be an ignorance of my part on some of the rules, difference between this and what we already have in the clean it and lean it law? You know, I know we've already got a clean it and lean it program in our city that went through years ago, that have very similar penalties, where they would, you know, you could have something cleaned if you didn't clean it, and then it would get built, and it would go against your property as a lien. So I don't kind of see where this is a lot different. It just seems like it's a different set of words. What is rubbish? Where does that come in? Like, whose decision is that? Does one television set that's left outside of a property that gets a letter, and I'm told it's gotta get moved, is that my first, is that my first one? Or is rubbish really like all the trash from an eviction that's sitting outside of a property? Is it the trash that's blown against a fence because of these bad weathers we've had lately? I've cleaned up the fence along the edge of two of my properties probably once a week lately because of the bad wind, and I feel like I've been the net catching all of the debris that's blown from every house on the other side of Church Street, or from the other side of the railroad tracks over by Elizabeth Street. So that's a concern I have of the value judgments of who's enforcing this, and who's writing these rules, and who's gonna enforce these. I've been cleaning them every week, and you could tell me to clean it on Monday, and by Thursday, you'd still have the same type of cigarette wrappers, and food containers, and plastic bags from the local Family Dollar blown right up against that fence again. And unless you took a picture, you would think they were the same ones, because they're so similar in the type of trash that's been collected there. So that bothers me, that you could write me up on this day, I can clean it tomorrow, and on the third day, it would be something very similar back, and when the inspector came, they would think I'd never done anything. So that bothers me. I try to clean my properties about once a week, particularly when the wind's bad. In the summer, we do it every two weeks on a regular and consistent basis. We pick up the trash, because those fences become nets, almost like what you did in the river with dragging the net through and picking things up. Those fences just become the stop gate, and I'm thrilled to do it, because otherwise it'd be blowing all over the place, and it would probably end up in the river at some point. So that's a concern I have with the evictions that sometimes are unnecessary evil of our industry. There is some legal timelines that have to be adhered to of placing some of those items outside of the property. That's a legality. I can't just have a wagon sitting at the back door waiting for their property to be put in the wagon to be delivered to the landfill. So there is a legality issue with some timing there, and unfortunately, we want good clients, we want good tenants. Unfortunately, sometimes, I've had some cases where I've had multiple evictions in the same year. It's a horrible thing. It's expensive to me, and you vet your clients, and they have jobs, and once they move in, they lose those jobs, and sometimes it's just an unfortunate situation. But it does happen that you have multiple evictions in the same calendar year. So if you had two or three of those, and maybe that one television set that somebody said, "I don't want this anymore, just sit it outside, I'll get my uncle to come and get it on the weekend," and before the uncle comes to get it, it's written up by the city as one of my letters. So I'm concerned, I understand the reason for it, but I am concerned that there could be power put in hands that could very quickly turn into a very stringent implication of guilt on people who are really still trying to do the right things. And it seems like, again, it's kind of like a moving, a moving hit ball. The other thing I wanted to ask, in the title, this is just semantics, in the title, it does say, "to perform abatement after three rubbish violations," and then it's very clear in here that it says, "we're only gonna get two letters, we're only gonna get one twice." So I don't, it's either two or three, so which is it? You're gonna, you're gonna clean it on the, after the second one, and before you tell us about the third one, or is it really the third one, and then you're gonna come and clean it after that? So that could be a semantics thing, but again, if it's confusing to me, it could be confusing to others. Mr. Tillman, a couple typos, and even when you read it, you read it correctly, whereas this amendment with allow the rubbish, that should be a will, and when you read it, you, you know, your mind corrected it. So there's a typo, and I think that's my case. Can I answer anything for you guys? Can you answer anything for me?
I do have one, I remember Susan saying, that I believe she said, that they're gonna take pictures on the phone, with a phone...
Uh huh.
...of the incident, so we'll have it, so we'll know if we come back in three days if it's a different incident.
And that's true, but then there'd be another right up, and then that would be my second one, because you'd say it was different, and it would be different trash. And I'm just saying that in some of these neighborhoods, as hard as you work, trash just blows from places. And it's not even your...
I'm on the leeway, I know what you're talking about.
It's not even your trash.
I'm on the same boat, because I get all the stuff from my neighbor.
Exactly.
Because that's the way the wind blows.
The way the wind blows.
But I'm responsible for it.
I understand that, but again, it's hard to keep, to keep it 100% clean.
Oh, I...
Even as hard as you work at it. If you went away for the weekend, or went away to holiday up north, you could come back and it could be there. So, just my concerns. I have concerns.
Okay. Thank you. Next is Richard Ensley.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I support what you're trying to do. It's in the interest of a cleaner city, and I support that 100%. I have a suggestion for, that I think might improve and make the proposed changes more workable. One of the things, one of the first things that I learned when I started buying property, and as a property owner, is that you're gonna be cleaning up trash, period. I mean, it's just a fact of life, and you're gonna be cleaning up trash, and 99% of the time, it's somebody else's trash. It's not your trash. But it's a fact of life, and if you own property, where does the trash come from? It might come from your tenant, who decides to get rid of a mattress, or haul a sofa outside, or whatever. It might come from a neighbor's tenant, the next door neighbor. I have a case like that right now, where the debris that has been pushed over on our property doesn't belong to my tenant or me. It might come from the public. Lynn told you several examples of that. If you own property near a convenience store, you will, you'll never see the end of it. I mean, people throw their wine bottles, or their Coke bottles, or their trash, whatever. It's a fact of life that if you own the property, nobody else is gonna clean it up. So who's left? The property owners left to clean it up. And I understand that, and I will accept that responsibility. My suggestion for improving the ordinance is this. Don't on, if, you know, you can have an instance in January, and another one in June, and then a windstorm in September. When, I don't want to see three instances come on one of my properties, but it's beyond my control, and I would ask you, don't abate the notice on the, if it's the third time, the fourth time, whatever. I won't argue with you whether four times is right, or three times is right. You gotta draw a line somewhere. But don't not send the notice, because if you send me, or any other responsible property owner, if you send a notice, I'm gonna get something done about it. And I think, you know, my track record, and most responsible property owner's track record bears that out. But if I don't know anything about it, I can't do anything about it. So I would say, I think that's counterproductive of not notifying somebody. Now, if you, if you got people who are intentionally doing this, or whatever, that's a whole different story. But send the notice, let people know, and then if they don't comply in the required number of days, or whatever, then have at them. Put the fines on them. You'll never get a clean city if you don't. And the other part of it is the methods of notification. I'd just say, the more methods that you can use, whether it's personal service, or registered mail, or US mail, or whatever, the ultimate objective is that the person who needs to know about it finds out about it, and that's how something will get done. That's the easiest route to getting it cleaned up, so those are my suggestions, and thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you, Richard. Any others? Okay. Hearing none, any comments regarding the order? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. We will now go into closed session, and I'll call for a motion to go into closed session to discuss the employment assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom the public body has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more individuals. A personnel matter in accordance with the Annotated Code of Maryland 3-305B-1.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Boda.
Second.
Let me get my... Mr. Ierton, Mr. Boda made the motion. And Mr. Ierton made the second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All those opposed? Motion carried.